Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting on this Monday, June 27th, in the beautiful city of Geneva, Illinois.
I'm Ron Singer.
I represent the 4th Ward, as well as does my colleague, Mr. Jim Rodecky. So, let's get on with the business of time. We see we have one of our alderpeople not present, Mr. Alderman Marx. The remainder of the council is available, so let's begin with our special presentation this evening, and I'm going to pass the banter over to Mayor Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have the special privilege of welcoming a new police officer to the city of Geneva, and I would like to ask Mr. Thomas Kruger to join me at the podium first. That's not the podium. All the way up here, big guy. And I know you prefer Tom, not Thomas, correct?
Yes.
So, this is Mr. Tom Kruger. You're going to be sworn in, or take the oath, I should say, of the office of police officer for the city of Geneva this evening. You have some special guests with you this evening. Would you like to introduce them?
Yes. That's my brother Mike, and then my mom Kathy, my girlfriend Kelly, my other brother Steve, and then my dad Mike.
Welcome. And just to clarify, Mike's the oldest?
Yes. I'm the middle, and then Steve's the youngest.
Then Steve.
Yep.
Some of you may not know this, but Tom, you're a graduate of Jacobs High School.
Yes.
The Golden Eagles.
Yes.
Were they always the Golden Eagles?
As far as I know, yes.
As far as you know.
Yep.
And then you had a basketball scholarship to Lindenwood University.
Yes.
Did you go to the St. Charles-Mo campus or the Belleville campus?
The Belleville campus.
So, is the Belleville campus, the nickname is "The Lynx"?
Yes.
Okay, so, because the St. Charles is the Lions, right? And Tom here played guard for the Lynx. How was your career there? Good?
It was okay. It wasn't phenomenal by any means. Got my, played basketball, got school paid for, and that's kind of what I was there for, so.
Life's good. And you still play basketball?
Yes, sometimes.
Play in a pickup league, or just kind of hang out?
Uh, kind of just casually.
Just casually?
Yeah.
Now, I read somewhere that Lindenwood University is the oldest college west of the Missouri River.
Yep.
That's impressive.
Yep, and they have like the most sports in the nation, too.
Is that right?
Yep. They have everything, bass fishing, whatever you think of, they got sports.
Bass fishing?
Yep.
Do they offer scholarships for bass fishing?
I think they do, yep.
Do they really?
It's crazy there, yeah, everything. Clubs, I think it might be a club team, but they probably give like a talent scholarship or something like that, yeah.
How does one get a talent scholarship in bass fishing?
I'm not sure, but they do.
Wow. You have a very impressive background.
Thank you.
Very impressive background. Hmm, I'm looking at all your credentials here. What famous figure skater came from Jacobs High School? Do you remember?
Uh, Colin Brubaker.
Very good.
Yep.
Well done, man.
I actually knew him, I was friends with him.
Well done.
Yep.
Did you know him?
Yeah.
You did?
I played football with him.
You know, he's the head figure skating coach, or I should say skating coach, at Fox Valley Ice Arena.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. I haven't really kept in touch with him, just in high school I knew him.
Well, why don't you put your uniform on, cruise over there and just say, "Hey, Rock, how's it going?" According to my notes, you received a Master of Science in Criminal Justice Administration and a Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice.
Yes.
Did you always want to be a police officer?
Uh, not always. I kind of just decided I wanted to be one once I, I was picking classes, and I thought that a career in law enforcement fit me, so I kind of just went with it, and it worked out awesome with me. I love it now. I've, I worked as a corrections officer before this, and...
Cook County Deputy Sheriff. Private investigator. What's that like?
It was interesting. It was for workers frauds, or people who were saying they were work, it was who were like quitting out of work. I'd go up, pull into their house, and just follow them. I'd catch people like mowing their lawn, doing yard work when they're not supposed to be doing anything, and just, just stuff like that. Kind of ruined people's lives in a weird way.
Would that be a Mrs. Rodecky? No kidding?
Yep.
Wow. And a public safety officer?
Yes.
Public safety officer, explain that.
I did that at Lindenwood University.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, campus, public safety at Lindenwood.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Yep.
So, this is really in your blood?
Yep.
What age do you think, you know what, police work is for me?
Um, probably right when I transferred to Lindenwood and started my bachelor's, because I, I went to Olgin Community College and put that for two years and played basketball there.
Smart move.
And then when I transferred to Lindenwood, that's kind of when I was 100% set on criminal justice, and I did the public safety and all that stuff, so that's kind of when I fell in love with it. I worked with other, they had a cops for credit program, so I worked with other police officers.
Oh, you did?
So, that was a nice, so I got to talk with other police officers, and they made me really like the job, so that's kind of when I fell in love with law enforcement.
So, when you worked with the other officers, were you primarily in Belleville, or were you also in St. Louis, or were you...
I was just strictly the campus, just Lindenwood University.
Strictly the campus, okay. Were you at ECC when they had their great run toward the national championship?
Unfortunately, I was not. For baseball, they did, but not for basketball.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yep.
Would you like anyone to join you while we administer the oath?
Oh, no, that's okay.
That's okay.
They told me they don't want to come up here, so.
Normally, folks, our clerk administers the oath. Our clerk is absent this evening, so I have the high honor. Why don't we get this thing out of our way and come up here, sir?
I was trying to hide behind that.
What's that? Yeah, don't touch that. Give me face me. This is my school all over again. We all said, "Would you kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me?" I state your name.
I, Tom Kruger.
Having been appointed the office of police officer in the city of Geneva...
I've been appointed the officer of police officer in the city of Geneva.
...county of Kane...
County of Kane.
...affore said...
Affore said.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of officer...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of officer...
...of police, excuse me, according to the best of my ability, so hold your gun.
To the best of my ability, so hold your gun.
Congratulations, easy as that. Mom and Dad, brothers, Kelly, thank you very much for being with us, and all the police officers as well, thank you very much. Congratulations. This is a lot of time. It's over time. I did share with the Krugers, Mr. Chairman, that they, by all means, can depart after the administration of the oath, and I think they're heading to dinner somewhere in Geneva, so.
Very nice. Well, let's continue on with the business at hand. I'm in need of a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Minutes from June 13th, 2016.
So moved.
Cummings makes the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bruno. Any questions or deletions? Are we fine? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, committee, and we go on with the audience of business. Item 4A, we are recommending the approval of special event application and use of city services from Geneva Chamber of Commerce for the Festival of Vine, September 9, 11, 2016.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Sino. A second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Any questions from the council members? Anyone from the audience? None. Fine. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. On to 4B. We are recommending the approval of a special event Class E6 liquor license for Geneva Chamber of Commerce, Festival of the Vine, September 9 to 11, 2016. A motion is needed. Alderman Kilbert makes the motion, a second, and by Alderman Sino. Any questions from the members of the council? Anyone from the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Passed unanimously. Thank you. On we go to item 4C. We're recommending the draft ordinance, a zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of the property from the R1 low-density, single-family residential district to the R2 medium-density, single-family residential district, the Havelchak Brothers. I need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Rodecky.
Second.
I need a second. Second by Alderman Cummings. Any questions from the council members? Anyone in the audience? Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. On we go to 4D. We are recommending a draft ordinance zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of the property from the OR Office Research District to the R2 medium-density, single-family residential district, Havelchak Builders. I need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Sino. Any questions from the council members? Anyone from the audience? None. Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approved unanimously. We are now on item 4E. Recommend the draft resolution approving preliminary final subdivisions for 21 lot single-family subdivisions of the subject property in the R2 medium-density, single-family residential district to Havelchak Builders. A motion is needed.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Cummings, seconded by Alderman Kilbert. Any questions from the council? I have a question. David, there is a recommendation regarding off-street parking. Who is responsible for the cost of the signage?
That would, that would be the developer.
The developer would be. Very good. Thank you for that, sir. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. You're quite welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
We are on item 4F. We are recommending, by the way, these two items, F and G, are sort of housekeeping items. We're recommending a draft ordinance establishing the application fees for zoning board of appeals reviews pertaining to Title 11 zoning of the Geneva City Code. Any of the Aldermen have a question related to this issue?
Need a motion?
Alderman Rodecky?
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion, so we can discuss it.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Rodecky, seconded by Alderman Bruno. Questions by the council members? Alderman Rodecky, please.
Yeah, I have a couple of points to clear.
Yes, sir. Sure.
If I'm reading this correctly, it looks like it's sort of all excluding the staff and it looks like administrative sort of party stuff for the last five and a half years to get about $5,700.
That seems about right. That's correct, yep.
No, please, I just want to make sure that I got this right.
Yep, yep.
And we're proposing take it from $150 to $625 for the application.
And that, that would be to cover staff costs? But yes, correct.
Okay. About 360% increase. Have you given any consideration to, and that's, that's resident and non-resident?
Correct. Residential, commercial...
And non-resident?
Correct.
I would, I would prefer, you know, when I looked at what some of the, and I saw the table and all the work that's put into putting this together, first of all, you know, I mean, it's a five, it's $5,000 or $5,700, and all that five and a half years, a lot of thousands of dollars. I'm not so sure how...
Alderman Rodecky, your mic, please.
I'm, I'm not so sure how, how interested we are in trying to, to recapture that, and I have very, and I have less interest in charging a resident or increasing a fee by over 300% in order to try to offset that. We only get a handful of these appeals on an annual basis, and, and I would prefer to see something come back suggesting a resident fee and a non-resident fee to cover this, rather than one set fee of $625. And, and one of the reasons that it concerns me for a resident is, as the council probably is aware, when somebody comes before the zoning board of appeals, and if they are not successful, their remedy is then to go to court, not to come back to the city council.
Correct.
So, you know, Alderman Singer and I have a, a person in our ward who'd like to replace a fence. He's just maintaining his property, but he wants to replace it. It's, I guess it would be non-conforming, because it's a six-foot fence, and now the, I think the zoning would make him put a four-foot fence, so he wants to appeal that to the zoning board of appeals. It would now cost him $625 to do that, if he's unsuccessful. Then he has to go to, to the courts to do it, and, you know, it's a citizen that's attempting to maintain their property, and I think it becomes a little bit punitive at that point, so, you know, I would prefer that, you know, I'd be interested to hear what the other council members say, but I just think that taking it from $150 to 6 and 1/4 and laying that off on the residents is too much. I don't know how many of these, we have a couple of them a year. I would prefer to see a two-tier. A recommendation may be brought back for something for residents, something for non-residents. And, and I think this also illustrates, and it's a, it's something beyond this discussion, but I think we need to have another discussion about combining the zoning board of appeals with, with the plan commission. Again, when you see the, you know, the, the irregularity with which they meet, because they don't have any, because they don't have many things come before them, so.
Right.
Anyway, long-winded answer, but I do think that we need a two-tier approach with, if we're going to change our fees, maybe $200 to residents, 6 and 1/4 to nine. And I'm, and I'm not entirely concerned about recovering all the costs with it. I think there's a cost of, of doing business to the city, and I think the city inures a benefit when people do go before the zoning board of appeals, anyway. So, anyway, thanks for your time and, and work with putting this together.
Can I give you a little background or answer a couple of your questions there? So, just so you know, staff was directed in this last fiscal year to take a look at fees. One of the fees that the building divisions in charge of is zoning board of appeals, where the staff liaison for that committee. While doing that research, trying to do the right thing and cover our costs is why we went down the road at the 625 compared to 150. Because we didn't think it was staff's role to say, "Well, let's give them this, you know, let's give away this much service or only charge this." That, that's for you guys to decide what you think's fair and acceptable. As far as a resident, non-resident, either way, it's going to be a, it's going to be a property owner within the city. If you're saying commercial compared to residential, maybe that's something we can look at. Maybe I'm not understanding your, your question, but, but the thing with that is, we put in the same amount of staff time and the same amount of third-party costs, whether, whether it's a residential or a commercial, or a resident or a non-resident that's applying for it.
Mm-hmm. I guess I'm looking at one of the attachments, and I think you referred to it as resident, non-resident, if I'm not mistaken, in the packet.
Residential.
Oh, so it would be commercial and residential, when you say non-residential?
Right.
Okay. I, I would be, I would be fine with, with splitting it between commercial, you know, making a, I, I would assume that maybe there's a little bit more with commercial than, than residential. Again, I mean, you only have a handful...
Right.
I mean, you've gone, I mean, you've gone three years where you had one case come before the zoning board of appeals, so, you know, I don't want to get tied up in a lot of, kind of ranted a little bit earlier about, you know, I don't want the council to start getting, or staff to get tied up in, in process-driven things, that, you know, we should be looking, I think, more at outcomes than process, especially when it's such a small amount of money over a six-year period of time. We may be into it for more than $2,000 now with, with putting this together, I don't know, so. Anyhow, I, I would, I would still prefer to see a, a different tier for a resident and commercial or something, or, or even less. I'm not looking to recover every, every dime of what we, what it costs us to do this, so. I just think it's cumbersome for the handful of residents that do need to come for us for some form of relief with the zoning board of appeals, particularly since the remedy is into the court system after that. I think it's a little different deal, so. But I, you did great work with this. You did exactly what we asked you to do, so, thank you very much. You did a good job with it.
Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky, you had an additional question that I would like to respond to, and you had thought that we might need to revisit combining the zoning board of appeals with the plan commission. We had looked into that prospect some time ago. I can't remember how far back it was, but it didn't seem as if it was agreeable amongst the council members. But certainly, if you feel comfortable in asking the staff to read, to look into the issue for a possible prospect, I think that's something that can be done. Am I correct, Stephanie?
Yeah, I think maybe we just address this matter at hand, and that's a discussion for another day. I think this just kind of illustrates the lack of activity at ZPA, you know, when it's only a handful of cases over a six-year time frame, so.
Would that have to be done in a matter of a motion, or just a suggestion?
Uh, no, I think we could take it as a suggestion, and we could certainly schedule it for one of, either a policy discussion meeting or a Wednesday night meeting.
Okay.
Absolutely. So, we have all the data to bring back, of course, it's pretty fresh.
Yeah, 2013, when it was discussed.
Very good. The motion is on the floor. It's been seconded. Those in favor, sign, oh, Alderman Simoni, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Dustin, in this last five years, do you know how many cases came before the ZPA offhand?
My guess would be a dozen.
A dozen? Of those dozen, how many of those would, would you say were, were reversed? In other words, denied?
Uh, I believe two of them were denied.
Two? Here's, here's my concern. So, 10 of them was, 10 of them, the board supported the, the findings.
Correct.
And two were reversed. My concern is those 10 people paying $650 to go through this process and, and not getting what they consider a satisfactory response, which is returning, and I think it's going to create, it's hard enough to get to that process, because you've gone through so many stages to get there, and then you've gotten there, and it's a difficult, it's a difficult hurdle to overcome, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
As proven by the two of, of 12 were reversed. I, I think it's sort of putting some serious salt in the wounds at that point for 10 of the 12 people to say, "Not only are we not going to reverse it, but it costs you $650." I know there's time on our part and everything else, but with only a dozen of them over five years, I think it's not, I think, I think it's one of those expenses, I, I agree we should raise it, but raising it to 650 is not, in my opinion, I think it's too much, too much too soon. So, I would be in support of raising it, but I wouldn't support raising it to $650, because I think it's a tough pill to swallow for those folks who, who don't get satisfaction. And, and by the time they get to that point, they've gone through quite a bit, so.
Right. So, just to clarify, that 10 of the 12 were approved variations?
So, so they got satisfaction?
Correct.
Oh, okay, I thought it was the other way around.
And only two of them were rejected.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought...
Or the finding of fact found that...
I thought it was the other way around. I apologize.
That's why I wanted to clarify that, yeah.
I apologize.
10 of the 12 did pass.
Okay. Well, that makes me feel better than if we're going to raise it to that amount, but I still think 650 is, is a, is a number, is a number a little too high. Too much, too quick. Thank you, Chairman.
Alderman Bruno. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to dispute any number, but I, I would kind of look back on some of our recent, this all came out of just simple cost recovery for all of our discussions, and we, you know, seemed like we were pretty straight down the line in terms of, "It cost us this, let's charge this." You know, with, with individual landmarking, you know, we, we added a fee to the, regardless of whether it was, we added the fee for someone, we, we lost the incentive of someone seeking out landmarking for their property. It seemed like we were pretty, our primary goal was, was clear, and that was cost recovery. I, you know, I'm not going to, I, I think it's not unreasonable to expect that someone pay the cost. Now, I would have one question, though, Dustin. I know when, when petitioners want to come before, say, HPC, there's sometimes some, some counseling, you know, to, to get them up to speed, to give them a sense as to whether they might have a case, might not have a case. That, that 10 out of 12 got approved roughly, I think is, suggests that that counseling is effective. So, if I'm, I'm fine as, as presented, you know, I'm not trying to be punitive, but if our goal is cost recovery, it's cost recovery. Thank you.
Any other council members which should speak? Yes, Alderman Kilbert?
So, I think, so giving this an additional thought, yeah, I don't know if $150 is much of a deterrent to a frivolous appeal. Thing is, is if they appeal it, normally they would probably seek legal counsel, and they're going to spend a lot...
Mr. Kilbert, put your mic on, please.
Yeah. $150, I don't know if that's going to prevent frivolous appeals, and again, apparently it doesn't look like we've had a lot of frivolous appeals, that if we've only had a dozen over a five-year period. But $150 anymore, I don't know if that's a deterrent if someone is, is upset with someone, and they decided that they're going to appeal, and they're, this is, this is just another way to vent. And in a lot of instances, I would assume that they, they, they'll retain the services of an attorney. Is that, is that correct, Dustin?
Uh, I would say probably 25% of the time.
Okay.
The rest of it, it's meeting with staff and talking through it, and looking through old examples to, to help plead their case.
Okay. So, I mean, if they're going to, if they're going to retain an attorney, they're going to pay a lot more than $625, probably. So, you know, I think our staff times is as important as the fees that an attorney's going to collect for representing someone that's going to be appealing. You know, that's just another side of the argument, and, and again, you know, these are real costs, and, you know, I think it's our responsibility to recover real costs whenever possible. Thank you.
Are there, yes, Alderman Carr?
Thank you for your work on this. The table was helpful. The number did, was, was kind of eye-popping to me, that is a pretty big jump all at once. To clarify, this table, so we have a lot of suburbs where it's listed as resident, you know, 225 in Hensdale, all other, 525. So, what's all of other there? What, are you saying this, I guess I was assuming non-resident, as in someone who does not have a address in the city of Geneva. an address in the city of Geneva. Are you saying it's resident residential versus commercial on this?
On which one are you on?
I'm looking at the whole table. Aurora's resident 200, non-resident 750.
So my guess is non-residential property is the way they break it down. So they have a residential property and a non-residential?
Is it not a...
Is how they're breaking it down?
Not geographically, you're not talking geographically, okay.
Correct.
You know, I'm in favor of raising it some, $150 does seem low, but I would also like to see some kind of two-tier approach. I feel like the value to maybe a commercial establishment and getting a zoning variance could be more valuable to them than a residential, we're talking about a fence maybe, very important to them, but, so I guess I'd like to see a two-tier similar to some of these other suburbs. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings and then Alderman Rodecky.
I worry about a couple of things with this. One is the pushback that a higher, it's a higher hurdle. So you go from 150 to something, it's a higher hurdle for somebody to clear when they want to argue their case. And I'm not sure that philosophically I agree with attaching a cost and then charging for it in every single area of the city. So I don't know that I want to accept the drift towards fee for service. You know, the classic example is the ambulance, it sits there however many hours a day and then every once in a while it gets used. And if we just had to pay for the ambulance itself every once in a while, that cost for an individual would be really high. So at some point, taxes handle that. I think that, you know, we're charging a boatload of taxes in Geneva and those taxes have to go somewhere. So I'm hesitant to raise, to go in the general direction of raising fees. However, when I see our fees versus other fees, I think perhaps there's an argument to become more equal. I wouldn't want it to become a deterrent. I'd like to see a two-tier structure like other aldermen have suggested, perhaps commercial versus residential. I'm thinking, and it may be wrong, but I'm thinking that commercial establishment has a deeper pocket than residents. Personally, I've run with people who, at 150 bucks, they appealed and thought they had another, more of a case and may have gone back, but the expense was too much. It was not one that they wanted to take on. And so I'm, I certainly don't want to go to $650. Certainly don't want to do that. And number two, I'm wary of the drift towards attaching a cost covering fee on everything for the residents of Geneva. Thank you.
Since Alderman Miladra has not yet spoken on the issue, I'd like to have him do so and then I will go to Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you. I was going to head in a direction similar to where Don was going. It certainly is the council's prerogative to choose when we're going to subsidize a fee because that's effectively what we're doing. We're paying staff time for these appeals and if we choose not to charge staff time, transcript time, or whatever, that is our prerogative. As Alderman Rodecky said, the city does benefit from appeals of this nature. I think whether they're granted or denied, I think that we have zoning in place for a reason and it's not an us versus them scenario. It's I would like to make a change that steps outside of the zoning. We determine whether or not the impact on the community is greater than we're willing to bear. Dustin, I have questions for you. When was the last, maybe in the packet, I don't know. When was the last time we increased these fees?
1990.
Okay, so the idea that we would increase our fees maybe once every 10 years shouldn't knock anybody for a loop. I think that we can start with, an increase is in order. Question is the magnitude. I've heard comments about tiering it. This one is probably way off the wall, but to help me understand, you've given us statistics about the average spent per appeal. Are some of these appeals like really gnarly and some of them really basic? Is there a wide variance?
Yes, and that's why when we did it, we did an average because, for example, Burgess-Norton, when they were going through theirs, that number skyrocketed because it was two or three meetings worth compared to, you know, just one individual that came in for a fence.
Right, so the tiering that I would propose is based on this technical measurement called gnarliness I would go for. I think that if, you know, if you're in for a fairly straightforward thing, let's say something that's 10 hours, eight hours of staff time, something along those lines, you know, a couple hundred bucks, we're at 150 now, let's up that to, I don't know, $300. But then if it's something that's going to occupy a half a week or a week, I could see recovering our costs for that significant level of effort on the part of staff because it's taking those people away from other things that they could be working on as well. So we're incurring the cost of the time, we're incurring the opportunity cost of the time lost and things of that nature. So the tiering I would like to see us go for is, you know, simple versus complex. I don't think simple should be $150, we're way behind the times there. I would say 300 and then complex could be the 625. That's my thought.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rodecky?
Well, I'm all for simple and I'd like to make it simpler. You know, I think this is an art form, not a science, not a math game, what's gnarly, what's not. And you know, the discussion about the 10 cases that were successful went to the ZBA. I think the argument is made just as strong for those folks that, you know, I took issue with one of your zoning ordinances, I came before you to get my six-foot fence replaced and you agreed with me and now I'm going to hand you $615 or $25 for the privilege of having you agree with me. And I know that's overly simplistic, but in the end, that's what it is. So here's what I would propose as an amendment to the motion, that we, recognizing that we do need some increase, recognizing that I think generally speaking, we don't, we're not trying to recoup every percent of this, that we do provide a service, that it is a valuable service. It would seem to me that it would make sense to increase the resident fee to $250 per application and the non-resident to 500. I'd make that motion.
Non-residential?
Non-residential.
Non-residential.
The motion on the floor and...
That's an amendment to the main motion. No discussion on the amendment.
Yeah, we need a discussion on the amendment. Alderman Brunel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm kind of confused. Again, to go back to our other cost recovery discussions, it was, you know, we gave pretty clear guidance to staff that all of our fees should be cost recovery. I point back to landmarking in particular because we've added some costs for something that only benefits the community, that only benefits the neighbors. By definition, we are ostensibly with a zoning board of appeals, that appeal is to intrude, if you will, on the neighboring properties. I mean, if we consider all of our zoning to be protections for our neighbors, you know, the fact that we would go cost recovery on something that's just good in landmarking, but not do cost recovery on something which diminishes protections for neighbors, you know, I'm just kind of confused on that as to, you know, how we direct staff in these matters. Thank you.
Would you like to explain his confusion, sir?
Well, I just wanted to add one other thing. We had talked about changing the fee. We have not had a discussion yet about the deposit for the third party. So just to confirm that, there's a deposit also in this for $400 to recoup for the third-party costs. So I just wanted to make sure you guys all knew that and there wasn't any questions or that wasn't an issue. Above and beyond the deposit, or I'm sorry, the application fee.
Any further discussion on the amendment? The amendment has been seconded. Will we take a voice vote on the amendment?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Miladra?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now we will...
The main motion has amended.
The main motion on the floor, yes, David?
Just like a point of clarification, so I'm sure when we're amending the ordinance, we have a residential fee of 250 and a non-residential fee, commercial and industrial 500. Is multifamily just considered residential if it was an apartment complex or townhome development? So multifamily should be included with the commercial and industrial? Okay, just wanted to be clear. Gnarly, got it.
Thank you, David. Now we will vote on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We are now going on to G. We're asking for recommendation of draft resolution authorizing the execution of fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget amendments as presented. A motion is needed. Motion, I'm sorry, who was the motioner?
Kilburg.
Kilburg and seconded by Alderman Cummings. Any questions to the motion from the council members? Anyone in the audience? Oh, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We are now on H, for H, we are recommending a draft resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Geneva and the Geneva Community Unit School District number 304. A motion is needed? Motion, Alderman Miladra, seconded by Alderman Brunel. Council, any discussion on the motion from the council members? Any discussion from the audience on the issue? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Simoni?
Thank you, Chairman. I would recommend that we don't vote on this until we have a full council. I think it's important enough that we're all here. It was important enough that we were all here for HPC. I think it should be also the same, that we are all here for this subject matter as well. Thank you, Chairman.
I would advise the alderman that next Tuesday, July 5th, the next regularly scheduled council meeting, we will have at least two members absent as well, possibly three. If we held a special committee to hold that night as well, we would have to then continue. So...
Well, Mr. Mayor, as an aftermath to this, bear in mind that items H, I, and J, as well as K, will be coming before a special council meeting on July 11th. We will have a committee to hold meeting and then a special council meeting following that, dealing with these issues. So bear that in mind as well.
That's assuming it passes.
Correct, assuming it passes.
But that vote can dictate possibly whether it does or it doesn't.
I agree.
And I'm just saying, it's important enough that I think we should all be present and this subject matter has gone on a couple of years now. Another 30 days or 15 days, I think is not, it's more important to have everybody present than it is to...
I think what we're trying to do here is coordinate this along with the board's meeting that they'll be doing reasonably soon as well so that we get all the ducks in a row at the same time. Teresa, you want to respond to that, Kathy, please?
I just wanted to point out that the statute does have a time limitation from the time that the public hearing did occur to the time that the ordinances would be considered. Our legal counsel has advised that we put forward the matter for a vote prior to that 90 days, which would be about mid-August. So we have tried to push it out as far as we can, given the council's meeting schedules. So just keep that in mind, please.
So we have till mid-August?
You do.
Thank you.
Is there any other suggestions? Alderman Kilburg?
We received some correspondence from you late this afternoon. Would you please walk us through that and explain what you're saying here?
Sure. We tried to understand where the school district's request for the, I think it was like three and a half million dollars, how it related to the value of the EAV. So we had looked at a comparison between the EAV value for the proposed TIF in comparison with the school district's total value of taxable property, to understand the percentage of what the TIF district EAV contributed to that. And from that calculation, we did pull the records from the county website. So for the taxable year that the TIF study is based on, the EAV is in 2014, payable in 2015. The TIF EAV represented .56% or one-half of 1% of the school district's total EAV. We also took a look at their line item for bond and interest payments in the school district's levy and the amount of the levy that was contributable to bond and interest payments was shown at 19.97%. So we did apply that again to the EAV value of the TIF and that also came out to one-half of 1%.
And the point being?
Well, you know, we were trying to understand how the requests for three and a half million related to the seven million, approximately seven million value EAV of the TIF district. We were trying to understand why that district and that property needed to meet a certain threshold. So we were just looking at, trying to understand how that number was put out.
So you're saying that the area in question or the properties in question is insignificant? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying it's insignificant, but I think that what it's saying is that the percentage of the surplus properties that are proposed to be, the increases shared with the taxing districts seems to be a good number considering the value of the TIF and considering the value of the properties within the TIF when compared to the total value of the taxable property within the school district. We were just exploring to understand, you know, was that number, where did that number come from? Where did the 3.5 come from? And so we do believe that the 29% is a good number to respond to the issues that have been brought forward by the school district, a number of them over the past few months. And the proposed draft IGA seems to be equitable with respect to some of those analyses.
So you're really trying to justify then that the 30% is the appropriate figure?
Well, I was trying to justify where the 3.5 came from. I was trying to understand if that 3.5 was applicable to just these properties? Is the 3.5 applicable similarly to other properties? Or how does that play into the larger picture? I don't have that answer, I'm not sure what the justification is. One of the exercises we did today was try to look at what the value of the EAV, what the TIF EAV value was in comparison to the total school district value. And I think that that number...
I'd like the mayor of the district, if they have representatives that want to speak in that, if that might be an appropriate time to speak in that.
Well, certainly I'll recognize the members of the audience, but I think if there are any other council members that would like to inject their thoughts at this point in time? Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I want to say that I have a lot of questions, but I absolutely, they're all based on, I mean, we've heard sort of inference on, about the letter. I want to hear, I absolutely want to hear from the school district. We've heard our sort of internal interpretation, I need to hear from you guys. This is what we wrote, this is what we meant by it, and this is our reasoning. So please, thank you.
All right, well then, we certainly will move that way. Someone in the audience would like to respond to these issues, please?
We have just 30 seconds, please.
I'd like to remind you to please begin to remark by telling us your name and spelling your last name for us, giving your address.
David Lamb, L-A-M-B.
David Lamb, L-A-M-B, fourteen oh one Fairway Circle.
Thank you, sir, continue on.
I am a Geneva school board member. And as part of the original discussion that was held between two representatives from the school district and the city, the three and a half million, much like the two million, wasn't a number that was just pulled out. The rationale for the three and a half million, and it's not quite three and a half million, but we'll go with that, was when we were looking at the TIF district, and granted, the school district, our funding, as you're well aware of, is ninety percent property taxes, or local funding, a huge percentage property tax. So that's our sole source of funding. So when we were looking at the TIF district, we recognized there's eighty-four properties, of which really only sixty have an attached DAV. Twenty-four of those properties, I'm sure everyone realizes, is city, park district, or state. So it's sixty properties. And we're saying, well, what's the objective of the TIF? Is to invest, or reinvest in redevelopment of the community. We get that, we're supportive of that. Well, again, our funding, when you carve out, our portfolio, so to speak, to fund our operations is properties. So when you take properties and you carve those out, clearly that impacts our funding. So we said, well, all right, how can we accomplish both objectives? And we thought we came up with a balanced approach, and quite honestly, the discussion was back and forth. We described the approach of two properties were put out there, okay? You know, and they were two of the larger EAVs, Geneva Place and Geneva on the Dam. We then said, well, are there other properties where the focus of redevelopment probably isn't as great? For example, fully functioning businesses, some businesses that have put money into their property, for example, Mill Race Seculary. If you've been down there, it's fully functioning business, does well, looks like, I'm not sure when it was built, but probably not thirty-five years or older. Then we started going west, starting with Buttermilk, then right up the street all the way to State Farm. You have, you know, businesses that are fully operational, you have School of Rock, you have Conestic and Dillon. Now, are all those buildings fully occupied, rented out? I don't know, but they clearly look to be fully functioning properties. State Farm, and then around the corner, to Shodin's corporate offices. Substantial amounts of money have been put in by private developers. Again, we were hearing, you know, TIFs are doing, you know, put public money in to incent private development. So we saw those properties, and we said, all right, well, those would be properties that would be probably not big targets of redevelopment. They're probably not going to be huge EAV increases over the next twenty-three years, as far as, you know, our understanding of TIF. So we said, well, let's carve those out, we'll take the steady beta market return, because we don't want to take big rents. We'll leave all the meat on the bone for the city, when you look at their primary objective, of which we heard are two main properties, and then the continuation of the East State Street development. So when you aggregate those properties, Mill Race, Seculary, with the two, Buttermilk all the way up to State Farm around the corner, that was roughly three point three, it's about three point four if you look at 2015 EAV. So we didn't just randomly say, eh, let's do three and a half million. It was constructed that way, of trying to throw out an idea that helps us with our ongoing funding, our costs every year, when your seventy-five percent employees' salary and benefits are going up every year. When we lose any property in there, or carve it out, granted, we have risk of EAV going up and down, but when you carve that out, it just puts more stress on us to meet our ongoing operations. So we said, well, what makes sense? We left what we thought was the primary EAV growers, where there's really going to be probably significant redevelopment, two main properties, and again, east side, and tried to carve out what we thought would be, again, just slow growers giving us market-like returns. So that's where that number came from. It wasn't a made-up, let's just pick out three and a half million.
Yes, Alderman Cummings?
So I want to hear from you, or your attorney, or other people on the board. Are you looking for particular properties and/or a hard dollar figure? And/or three and a half million divided by the aggregate amount of the TIF? And the reason I ask is that if, if, the worst case, I think, for us would be if you were to ask for three and a half million to automatically be taken out every year, because one could suppose the value of the TIF district falling to three and a half million dollars, and then the city has nothing to pay the contractors who have laid new sewer and new electric and widened roads and all that. So that's the one that I'm, that I have the biggest problem with. Because it, I don't want to say absolves, but it's a risk transference, too much in your favor, too, too, you know, not, we're taking too much risk with no reward. A percentage figure is intriguing to me, and then particular properties, I absolutely understand that argument. And so that's why I ask what it is, and I want to hear from you guys, what that is.
I don't think our board has fully discussed an approach. There were some ideas at the original meeting that were thrown out, as you're well aware of. We heard about a term that I wasn't familiar, a surplus property approach, which was in the IGA. So the extension of that, and one of the ideas we threw out, again, in the original, was identifying properties. And again, the properties that, in our mind, it could be completely different, I don't know all the plans, but again, the properties that seem to clearly have had already private investment, or are fully functioning, that where we wouldn't think there'd be huge amounts of private investment to redevelop something such as Buttermilk, something as Mill Race Seculary, you know? So that's how we threw that idea out there. So it was attached, and how we arrived at the number roughly was the aggregation of all those EAVs. That was it. We haven't fully discussed as a board alternatives, like a percentage of any increase. And I, to address your question about transferring risk, if you attach it to those properties, I mean, your risk is the remaining however many properties and what actually happens with redevelopment there. And we're not disputing in the IGA that the value is roughly forty-nine, well, forty-nine percent, yeah, that's true. But I think you have to get behind that number a little bit and look really what our position was, and what our request was. We seem to think that was a reasonable and still left huge upside to accomplish, I think, what the city's trying to accomplish with the TIF.
You just mentioned the word request, and that's the part that I haven't, you had said, well, we haven't fleshed it out, so to speak, not your words, but that's what I want to see. I want, we proposed an idea. I want to see where our overlap is, what your idea is, and go with that.
Well, as is left, and I know probably Rick wants to talk about some legal things, but how is left is that we would wait for the city to make a proposal to us through an IGA, right? And that came in, and it came in with two million dollars of property, the two original, we saw that, and I think we were given a short time to accept or reject. It wasn't, I don't believe, unless someone knows something different, you know, a back-and-forth negotiation. I mean, you have the framework of what we're thinking with that three, we'll call it three and a half, three point four if you look at 2015 EAVs. So at least you have the framework of how we arrived at that.
Alderman Mladra, remember, stay within the framework of the issue, please.
I just wanted to comment on the, what I believe the framework you laid out. And I'll preface my comments by saying, don't take it the wrong way, I think we can work this out, we're close. But the idea that you guys, that a school board, not necessarily experts in economic development, would look at a block and deem it not ripe for redevelopment, I don't necessarily understand. Before I moved here, I lived in another community to the east, they had a TIF right around the train station. The whole area was full of viable businesses. Every one of those businesses got relocated, so they could pursue the economic development that that city needed. So the presence of a viable business in a TIF district does not make the property not subject to the TIF. So I think there was a flaw in your logic right at the outset. You looked and you said, oh, here's this whole block of viable businesses, what do they want to tip those for? Well, maybe we do, maybe we don't, but maybe there's a development coming, maybe a developer will propose something that requires, you know, redevelopment of those properties, destruction of some of those properties, infrastructure going through those properties. I can think of a bunch of different reasons why. So I get what you said about, you know, we came up with the three and a half because we looked at these properties and we said they aren't subject for redevelopment, but I think that missed the bulk.
Certainly appreciate that, it was on the eye test.
Yeah.
Basically, what we've known.
Oh, yeah, we called that a windshield survey, I think.
If there's plans to redevelop those properties and give us a huge EAV increase for the city, great.
Yeah, exactly.
One of the challenges we have, again, I've heard of, this talked about in terms of investment. If you turn it around and you look at our situation, if you were a private investor and you were said, you were told, all right, you have a portfolio, we're going to freeze it here, okay? Any future appreciation you'll get in twenty-three years? And you look at the standard deviation of returns on TIFs, and it's very wide. It could be a home run, and we have some evidence of TIF one, I think, being successful. But it's a very risky proposition. And you look at the investor, you know, the district who wants and needs cash flow every year, and you're telling us to, you know, you'll get it in twenty-three years, but we don't know the outcome, well, that's an unsuitable investment. In the investment world, which I travel in, that would be completely illegal, it'd be an unsuitable investment. So if you think about, from our perspective, it just doesn't match. Alderman Cummings would never propose such an investment to one of his clients, wait twenty-three years. You could get a huge payoff, but when the client needs ongoing cash flow to meet their needs, it just doesn't match.
But we aren't taking your ongoing cash flow.
Well, you're taking incremental return.
Well, that whole increment, plus minus either way, is up in the air. We don't, we don't know what it's going to be, the thing with returns, right?
But that's the premise of a huge return.
That's the premise of a huge return, but your premise is a moderate return to a reasonable return, and we don't know that that's necessarily a given either. That's the thing with the whole, if the area was consistently returning year over year, it probably wouldn't have passed the TIF test.
Alderman Mladra, I would, so the evidence that was presented by S.B. Friedman talks about the TIF district not keeping, or declining at a greater rate than the city of Geneva. Factually true. Did anyone go behind those numbers? Again, you have sixty properties, okay? I laid out every property. You have three properties of those sixty, three. What is that, five percent? Accounted for fifty-five percent of the decline in EAV over that five years. Very concentrated issue. So, and then, in fact, 2015 compared to 2014, the TIF actually increased in value, now very small.
Right.
So the fact that it's this declining erosion, now, it's very, clearly, we see some properties, yes, and we're not trying to get in the way of that. Again, we're, I get it, you know, we did the eye test on these properties, we thought there was private investment that they're fully functioning, I agree, but that's how we arrived at it.
Yep, thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Getting back to, now, you, if I recall, you said you don't actually have a specific inventory of buildings to list for, that would match that? You said going up the hill and around the corner?
We didn't, I mean, we reacted to the, I actually know these by heart, but, I mean, we didn't, we didn't make the proposal. We received an intergovernmental agreement, and we had two properties. Do we have an idea potentially? Yeah. Again, it's the properties, again, that passed the eye test, that we thought there was private investment, where we thought, I don't know the plans, that whole block I mentioned from Buttermilk to State Farm could be eradicated and something great comes there, we don't know. But based on what we know as far as eye tests, and what we can see as far as private investment, Geneva Place, again, was built in 2005, something like that, new property, and it's only that parcel, that pin number, it's not the one right next, and the two they have, they redid something there, that would be your Benny. Then Mill Race Secuary, again, Geneva on the Dam, which is going out, and then Buttermilk, School Rock, Boxfire, Conestic Dillon, the ladies shop, I'm sorry, I don't know what that one is, State Farm, around the corner up to Shodin's corporate office. That would be, you know...
So that's the rough assemblage of properties that add up to that? Well, within there, and I think Alderman Mladra makes a good point, tipping, we might have to consider, you know, we're tipping property, not businesses, doesn't mean we're eliminating a business, but we know that we might believe that the property can do better, and, you know, what you described there, you know, there's some sketchy little strip mall in there that is certainly not up to Geneva standards, I would certainly, you know, and there's at least a couple that I think are...
Would you clarify what you mean by Geneva standards?
Well, in terms of their ability to perform and their, their street appeal, the eye test, if you will, yeah, there's businesses in there. That doesn't mean that it can't be self-evident to development professionals that proximity couldn't, that couldn't improve greatly in terms of general revenue through increased EAV and redevelopment. The other thing, too, in terms of, you know, that investment of twenty-three years, you won't see a return to twenty-three years, that gets to one of my bugaboos with, you know, when you start making discussions of run, you know, run the city like a business, we're not, you know, any government body shouldn't be looking for short-term returns, we're looking for our children, and our children's children's return. So twenty-three years, I think in the scope of what a city needs to plan for is not an unrealistic timeframe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alderman Cummings, do you have additional issues?
Yeah.
Your microphone, please.
As long as, Dave brought up beta, I want to bring up alpha.
We're trying to give you alpha.
What?
We're trying to leave you the alpha.
Yes, which I appreciate. But here's some interesting, you know, last meeting I said, think about what we're getting, not what it's costing us, things like that, or think about cost versus reward. What's really interesting is, I believe that most people would think that TIF one was successful or highly successful. TIF one had an annualized return over twenty-three years of ten point five-two percent. I think these days that sounds phenomenal. But Dave referenced something called beta. In other words, how did it compare to the rest of the stuff, the benchmark? How did everything else do? If we got ten and a half, ten point five-two percent in TIF one, we're... If we got 10 and a half, 10.52% in TIF I, we're saying this is a great success, how did it do versus the benchmark, the stuff we didn't touch? Does our touch help the area? City of Geneva, and this is not city of Geneva minus TIF I, city of Geneva, over the same time period, on an annualized return, gave us nine and three-quarters percent return. So we're looking at an alpha, an excess return of three-quarters of a percent over 23 years on TIF I. So then the question becomes, is, is the absence or removal of some of the cash flow to certain bodies worth it? Is it worth the consternation? Is it worth, is three-quarters of a percent in excess return worth what we're looking If it is worth what we're looking at, is there a better tool to achieve it other than a TIF? Or if it's not worth it, is there a way to reshape the TIF so that it, so that we do get better than three-quarters of a percent over what the benchmark is? And, you know, I'm not looking for answers tonight, obviously, but these are some things that I think we need to think about, along with seeing a hard proposal back from school on this. Thank you.
Alderman Simoni.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of things. As I had mentioned in, in the last meeting, I look at this, I think, a little differently. And I look at it with regards to, at the end of the day, it all comes out of the same pot, and that's the taxpayers' dollars. Whether it's coming out of property taxes, whether it's coming out of, you know, fuel taxes, whether it's coming, it's coming out of the residents and taxpayers of the city of Geneva. Whether we take more of this and move it into the school districts, you know, silo, and then we have to increase places for eating taxes, or a citywide referendum tax, where it's all coming from taxes. So the question that I have to, I ask myself is, what's the return on the taxpayers' dollar? What's the short-term return, and what's the longer-term return? I will disagree with Alderman Cummings on the alpha part of that equation, because I don't think the benchmark of the 10.52% annualized return over 23 years should be against the entire city of Geneva. It should have been, it should be benchmarked against a like area that did not have any redevelopment, and how did that fare over the 23 years? That, to me, is a more apples-to-apples benchmark than the entire city of Geneva as a comparison. So, I'm not buying, no disrespect to my Alderman angst friend here, of the three-quarter percent, that we're talking about three-quarter percent. So, I look at it, obviously, the school district has its needs, city has its needs. You know, we'd like to all do the Rodney King thing, and why can't we all get along? I think we can, if we focus on the best interest, or the best return on the taxpayers' dollar. Because at the end of the day, it's all coming out of taxpayer dollars. So that's how I look at this. And I have a question to the city, to the school district, and I want them to think about this. I know you're looking for the city to give up some of these TIF dollars, or the EAVs to be, because the school district has short-term cash flow needs. This is a long-term, you know, investment, and a return on that investment. So the question is, the, the school district had brought up some great ideas of reduction or elimination of land cash, abatements, et cetera. Would the school district be interested in entertaining for some short-term relief to satisfy the school district's cash flow requirements, and giving some of those up on a longer term that the city can use and apply towards incentives to some of these developments and towards some of these opportunities? So, because the, the TIF doesn't work with any money. I mean, it, it's, it's, the whole idea, just saying, it's a TIF. We need, you need money to, in order to, for incentives and to do all the infrastructure and et cetera. So we have to get the money somewhere. Is that something that maybe the school district would be interested in possibly entertaining as a, you know, as part of the contribution to this? And I don't even know if it's something the city, I mean, I talked with Kathleen a little bit about it, it's something that may help foster future opportunities for us.
If I can respond in two parts. Certainly, the school district entertains that. I, I'm pretty sure we mentioned that in some correspondence, so I can't answer on specifics of what we'd like to entertain and, and how would we proceed with that. But certainly, yes, we, we want to engage in conversation of ways to accomplish both, both objectives. In terms of real dollars of what we're talking about, right now, we have on the table $2 million. Fraction, right, 203, whatever. If those two properties, let's just pick a number, I don't mean to be too simplistic, let's pick 3% appreciation per year. Not trying to, it's pretty simple. 2 million times 3% is $60,000 of incremental EAV increase. And our tax rate, let's say, our piece is about six and a half percent. That's a little under $4,000 in year one. That, that were, would get $2 million. If you kept three and a half in there, it's like 6,000. Okay? Over five years, where you, 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 again, 3% per year, over five years, which, quite honestly, you know, the school district is in a crunch over five years, not, not coming down. Over five years on $2 million, that's $63,000 of incremental dollars to us, 63,000. If it's three and a half, again, it's 103,000. We're not, I mean, we're, we're, as I made count, we're scraping for every nickel. Okay? I, I mean, that, that's the dollar amounts we're talking about. Over a 23-year, Alderman Simoni, it, it's 1.3 million over 23 on 2 million versus 2.1. Again, it's just running the math out.
Yeah, and, and, and I, no matter how you run the math, you can run math both ways. You can turn around and say, okay, well, if you look at three and a half million, and you look over 23 years, and you look at, you know, 12,000 taxing parcels, and that comes out to whatever, you know, I'm just, I'm just gonna guess them, so please don't always like, you know, $21 a year, increased taxes to cover that. It's a, it, you know, you can run numbers to make them look negligible or large, no matter how you want to look at it. But at the end of the day, the end of the day, no matter your numbers, our numbers, taxpayers are panicked. That, that, that's what the bottom line is. And I'm gonna go back to, I'm a taxpayer, and for the $100 that I'm going to be taxed, what's the best return on that investment for me in the next 12 months, in the next three years, five years, 10, 15, 23 years? As Alderman Bruno said, you know, I'm the big, I'm the big one, I'm the one always saying we should be running government-like business. But I also know that government is a long tail. 23 years is really not as long as, as you may think. And the only indication that we have is that we, we do have one under our belts, and, you know, you can analyze it successfully or unsuccessfully, it all depends on how you analyze it. But at the end of the day, I think that personally, I would like to see this all work and everybody be happy, but it has to, it has to work for both of us. And I think if we stay focused on what's the best return, not the best interest of the parties, the best return of the taxpayers' dollar, we focus on that, I think we might be able to, you know, to, to get there a little differently and, and, you know, obviously check all our emotions at the door and all that other lovely stuff, but...
And I, I agree with that. I, I did want to address one other comment. I can speak for myself and my other board members, I believe in this thought. We've never thought it's us against them. We understand this is collectively our community. And while we have certain interests as a school board, I understand that, and we understand the city has interest in economic development, and that's your role. We get that. So, I, I did want to address, we, we don't particularly feel it's adversarial. I mean, we, we want to engage. I, I've never felt it, it's just matter of fact. I mean, the tone of our two separate meetings, you know, the people who were there, very collegial, very interactive. So I, I don't want it to be misrepresented, in our part, that it's us against the city.
No, it's, I mean, I'm not, and I'm not saying it's us against them. It's, it's, we, we each have certain roles and responsibilities to the community. We each have short-term and long-term needs and interests. You have a responsibility to satisfy yours, we have a responsibility to satisfy ours. And in that, sometimes, you know, the, the, the two directions don't necessarily, you know, don't necessarily work together. And I think what we're trying to do is get them to work together, to take short-term needs and long-term vision and collectively put it together to generate a deliverable to the community that everybody's happy with. So, I, and I agree, I, I don't think it's adversarial at all, and I think it's, I think it's all good. I think it's all good, I think it's all healthy. So, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other, yes, Alderman.
I found your comments pretty intriguing. The three properties, would you explain that again, the three properties with 55%?
So, there's 84 properties in the TIF district. Everyone agrees on that. If you look at the property, there's 24 of them, to be fair, that don't have an EAV attached because they're city of Geneva, Illinois Department of Resources, and, so there's 60 properties in the total TIF district that have an EAV attached. For the five-year period, which was in S.B. Freeman, the annual describing that this district declined more than the average. In aggregate, not disputing that. If you get behind it, three properties, Geneva Place, okay, Geneva on the Dam, and Mill Race Inn. Those three, so the total decline in EAV, we're at 7 million at the end of 2014. It was 10.4-ish at the end of 20, 2009. It's the five-year decline of 3.4 million. Those three properties, I just, and I don't have the PIN numbers I had provided, accounted for a little over 2 million, 55% of the total decline. Three, and then, so we all know, the Mill Race went from 955,000 in EAV, 2009. So at 177,000 today, 2015, I think it was a little over 200. That, that's a big chunk. Geneva Place is another one that went from 1.8-ish to 1.1. And Geneva on the Dam's the other one. So those three, again, account for, that's 55%, highly concentrated. So, I don't dispute the facts of S.B. Freeman, that, yep. But I think you have to look at it total. If you even get behind it a little bit more, and you said like the top 10, and look at what those properties are, well, they're all businesses, and we can look at the businesses as opposed to residential. I know residents appeal their property taxes, but it's a matter of course, businesses that have their attorney systematically appeal every year, they don't always win, but to get your EAV to decline, you have to, you don't have to appeal, but it helps. So, and there, there's more to, I think, that story.
So what you're saying is, is that there really isn't a district, there are select properties that are really drawing down the EAV?
As I described in our, our thoughts around carving out, we, we recognize, and I think everyone recognized, there's two primary properties, and then there's the side, the extension that, we, yeah, that makes, personally, to me, it makes a whole lot of sense. And that's, that was in our thought process.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to amplify something that Alderman Simoni said, the, which dovetails into something Alderman Cummings said about the comparison, that three-quarter percent difference. I think Alderman Simoni is, that's twice, I've agreed with you on some of these. The, to, by definition, the TIF district is a uniquely struggling area. It's got unique challenges, and I don't think it's reasonable to compare it to the city as a whole. You know, again, if we, if we could compare it to a like struggling area, which, you know, the Realtors would know about comparables, and we, we really don't have a comparable other than our other TIF districts, who've got that history to go on. I am intrigued by some, I don't know where it came up, I don't know if you mentioned it, or somewhere over there, the idea of a front-end relief for the school district, compensated with back-end investment in that district. To, to that end, I, I met with several school board members, and I, I was actually feeling out, you know, is, is there a window of danger that we could help you through until, you know, things are rosier, if there's a defined timeframe? And it was said, no. If, if there was some defined timeframe, that, oh, if we can just get through these two years or these three years, you know, I'd, I'd be all ears. I haven't, I haven't heard, I, I haven't heard the compelling argument for us to abandon what I think is our, our long-term best development interests. You know, again, if, if there's a, if there's some front-end, if, if you could really flesh out some front-end compensation, or front-end relief, so that after, after you get past this window, that you can contribute to the TIF, you know, whether that's land cash or what have you, I don't know how it came up, but, that's an intriguing idea, but we're not gonna define that, that type of thing here. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Anyone from the audience like to address the issue?
Good evening again. Rick Pettish, on behalf of the school board, who met this evening in open session and had a discussion about your meeting tonight. And one of the things we're asking is, it seems obvious from the discussion tonight, too, that, that it might be premature to approve a draft resolution of an IGA, when you would like to see a, a firm counter from the school district. And based on our conversation tonight in open session, I know that that will be coming, and coming very soon. And it'll likely include the properties that were, have already been discussed. That will at least give you, and, and the legal team, something to look at and to talk about and to share with you then. So, that will come very soon. Unfortunately, we got the first draft on the 17th of June, and we're supposed to have a response back in writing by the 22nd of June. Just wasn't enough time for our board to meet in executive session and discuss that draft.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a correction to Mr. Pettish's statement. Is it fair to state, good evening again.
Good evening.
That's true. On the 17th of June, a letter was forwarded to you, under my signature, and on letterhead with all the Alderman's names.
That's correct.
We requested a response by the 22nd of June, close of business.
That's correct.
We received a response 7:02 PM on Monday evening, June the 20th. Are you aware of that response?
I'm aware a response was, was given.
Are you aware of the nature of that response?
Yes, I am.
Okay. My... Okay. My assumption is that that response coming under the signature of the board president and with board member Mr. Lamb was indeed a response from the entire board. Is that a false assumption on my part?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we're going to have this discussion again, um, you know.
Well, no, no, but I'm just trying to clarify. You stated that there was no response made. I have a response dated June twentieth, and I shared it with the entire council, saying, the recommendation's not good enough, we'd like something different. That, that, everyone has that. I'm just curious, should I not have received that or accepted that or interpreted that as a official response?
We did not want you to go past the deadline without hearing from the school board, so that was, that was a courtesy sent to you, as you requested you on something in writing by, by the twenty-second. And so, that was sent to you as a courtesy, so that you wouldn't think we were ignoring you. Uh, but the board, the fact is that the board has not been able to meet as a, as a full body in executive session to discuss all of these issues. And we will do that, and we will, we will get you a firm response back.
Quick question for you. Why would the board meet an executive session?
If they're going to get advice from their attorney, um, that advice should be confidential and shared in executive session.
Is not the advice you're providing tonight counsel to the board?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm just, I just, why I love having you, Mr. Pettish.
I don't want to have, you know, I don't want to spar with you again.
No, I'm not sparring. I'm just trying to clarify, because I'm, I am truly confused here. Every correspondence that I've provided to and/or received from the school board, I've shared with the council. Every letter that's gone to the school board prior to going has been vetted by the council. We received a response from the board president. I, I assume that was a official response. If the letter would have said, this is a placeholder, but it didn't, that, that's why I'm confused. And as, as you know, Mr. Pettish, I think the school board knows as well, as I've explained and others have, it's my understanding the school board doesn't meet in the month of July, save for July twenty-fifth, I believe. We have a deadline of ninety days, which is August fifteenth. So, we're just trying to keep things moving along. That's all. That's why certain deadlines were put into place.
And that's perfectly fine. And, and, as you know, we can schedule a, a special meeting to make sure that we're within those deadlines, and, and we would do that.
Oh, I know.
Because this is, this is of such importance. All I'm asking tonight is that the, the council consider not approving a draft agreement, which is, does not have the approval of the school district, when you know that we're going to be sending you a counterproposal. That's all.
The motion on the floor, of course, is to recommend approval subject to the approval by the school board, but, so, I, yield my time.
Alderman Maladra.
Um, so, one of the things you, you just said, asked me thinking, you, you haven't been able to get the board together to discuss. Uh, Alderman Simoni's point about our full board should be here. Um, I agree with that, but time is ticking. Time is running out. So, I'm not comfortable with saying we won't vote on this until we have a full board.
I also received a note and I had a phone call with Alderman Marx indicating that although he would not be there, he understands why the vote should not be delayed. So.
I think that we have some time that we can put to profitable use. So, I would say, rather than leave it open-ended, we need to work under a deadline. Um, I'm not exactly sure what that deadline should, should be. I'm out on a limb, but Kevin just mentioned the twenty-fifth of July. Um, is that a cow day?
Uh, the eleventh is council, the eighteenth is council, the twenty-fifth is committee, the whole day, yes.
Your board going to be able to meet before then? I assume you're going to send something back that we need to react to as well. So...
I would certainly recommend to, to the board, that's in their best interest and the interest of, of all parties, that, that they meet and have a special meeting and that we take care of this.
Well, I'm going, I would go the other way. If, if we can agree that the twenty-fifth is when we're taking action, whatever you guys do is up to you, but we won't be hearing from you saying, oh, we haven't had time. Fair enough?
That's fair enough.
So, I would, I would propose that we, uh, wait until the twenty-fifth.
That would require a special city council meeting as well.
Yes, it would.
On that evening. The original plan was that we would be considered a committee meeting. We'll have a two-week period to then consider it a council meeting. What Alderman Maladra suggested, Mr. Chairman, is that
Oh, I'm, I'm.
The committee meeting and the council meeting be on the same night.
Okay.
So.
Well, there's probably a motion on the board. You'll have to remove that motion. That is on the.
I think I just moved to, did I table it?
Uh, we have, well, we would have to recommend Alderman Simoni's request. He asked that the issue be tabled.
No, he did not. He asked that it should not be considered.
Be considered? All right.
I've got a question. Do we, can we not have a cow meeting on the twenty-fifth and then city council the following? I mean, we're still within the timeframe of August fifteenth, right? I mean, versus cow, cow council back-to-back?
We certainly could. Um, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, but...
Because once we, because once we get the, once we get the s- school board's proposal, then we're making, I mean, I, I think we're at a, our backs are against the wall. We can't negotiate a whole lot more. I mean, we're either going to...
Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to hear from the committee tonight is, should this committee act tonight and consider the correspondence from the board president of the school district dated June twentieth at seven oh two PM as invalid? Because we have proceeded to date assuming it was valid.
I have a question.
I thought that was the counterproposal.
Yes.
Um, let me read this out loud. This is the letter that the mayor is referring to. Dear Kevin, thank you for your recent letter and IGA regarding TIF III. The board appreciates the city's efforts to find a reasonable solution to this issue. If you recall our verbal discussions over the last several weeks, we are asking for approximately three and a half million in EAV to service our bond and interest payments. We also discussed either properties or whole-dollar amount formulas. Since you have offered two properties, I assume this is your preferred method. I would request, and this is the part that I think is interesting and maybe should give us pause. I would request we meet to discuss adding some additional properties, or we would be happy to review any revision you might offer. Thanks to you and the council for your collaboration. I don't think that's invalid. I don't think we should invalidate it. I think it is a letter from the school board, uh, offering to continue discussions? This is, this is how I felt last week. We're getting derailed. We're getting derailed. We are, we have, we have common interests, we have common goals, we have overlapping interests, and, and the, the tone of the meeting the last ten minutes is, is towards derailment of this, and I don't like it.
I beg your pardon, Mr. Alderman, that's not true. And let me read from you some of the comments that I received from the council members, saying, that was our best offer. We should proceed.
Let me, let me reiterate.
Six council members spoke to me, several didn't. No need to mention any.
In my mind, the conversation in the last ten minutes has, has degraded this conversation.
I disagree.
I, I understand that.
If we are friends, we can speak candidly with each other, correct, Mr. Lamb?
Correct.
I don't think that we should disregard this letter at all.
Okay.
This is a letter from the school board in response to a proposal we gave them. We don't sit up here and disregard their letter.
What is the date of that letter?
June twentieth. The infamous seven PM, June twenty letter.
That's actually seven oh two.
So, I'd like to continue this conversation we're having with the school board and moving towards a resolution in this issue. I don't want to disregard their response. Uh, thank you.
Alderman Simoni.
Um, thank you, Chairman. Um, piggybacking on that letter, and I'm speaking what I think the council direction, or the city's direction is, is that we're not looking at a dollar amount, I don't think, and we're not looking at, uh, necessarily a guaranteed percentage. I think we now have offered a couple of properties that equate to twenty-nine percent, but they're properties, it's not a percentage. And I don't think we want to go down the path of a guaranteed dollar amount or guaranteed percentage. So, I think, in my opinion, we've made the, we've, we've said, these are the two properties. You now have mentioned a number of other properties, and I'm hoping that you come back and say, these, these are what we'd like to include, and then we make a, we make our final decision based off of, because I think the direction is going towards actual pieces of property. How they all shake out in dollars and cents and percentages, a different animal. But I don't think we're in a position that we want to absolutely positively guarantee a dollar amount or guarantee a percentage, but looking at properties. And we started that ball rolling with the two. Can we expect back from the school district, here's what we'd like to also include in that? I believe that, I believe that's exactly what we should expect. And then we can make, we, the city council can then make a final decision as to whether we, we, we can live with that or live with some combination of that. Absolutely. Is that fair enough? Very fair, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I just state for the reminder of the council and the committee tonight, that at the May sixth, I believe, was Mr. Pettish, public presentation by the school board, the reference was to buttermilk anew, all those properties. Those properties have always been percolating out there, there's no question about it. This is not anything new. What Mr. Lamb said tonight, I think we've all heard frequently. And I would remind the committee that the cover letter to Mr. Grosso references that we did consider both alternatives, a percentage and/or a, like a better word, surplus property, or what we've discussed as make-whole agreement. We determined as a committee, or excuse me, as individual council members, based on your vetting of the letter, that indeed, based on the numbers, the percentage was not in the best interest of the city. Therefore, we offered the surplus property proposal of the two properties. So, I mean, I, I guess, obviously, the committee rules, but my assumption is, it's, we're going to receive a letter back saying, as stipulated in the evening of the twenty-seventh, we'd like the additional properties included. And I suspect we'll find each other, we'll find ourselves back in the same place we are turning.
And I don't, and, and Mayor, I don't disagree. I think that we have to allow them the opportunity. I think Alderman Maladra made a very good point earlier, in the fact that, um, you know, we have an economic development department that's, that does this for a living and everything else. I think the school board is, is more of a, uh, they, they don't know what's happening past the, the visual part of the equation, driving by and seeing, as, seeing that, you know, uh, buttermilk looks like a viable whatever, and it, it very well may be, but there may be some bigger vision for that property or that space that, uh, you know, they may be unaware of. So, I think it's, I don't think anybody disagrees with the fact that these are all properties that have been listed, that have all been talked about. I think we just have to formalize it. And I think what happens is, if they formalize, they formalize it back, we take a look at, we may say, you know, that's all we can give is the twenty-nine percent, the two, those two properties. But at least it, we're, we're, I think we're following a formal process. Here it is, in writing, done. Here it is, back to you, done. And on July twenty-fifth, we vote, and, uh, the following week, it goes to city council, and it, and we, and we...
Not the following week, we'll go the evening of the twenty-fifth. Because if we're going to stick to the rules that apparently have been considered tonight, we can only vote if there's a full house. Is that true or not true?
No, my, my point was, we can't vote if there's a full house.
Right.
In summer, we may run out of time.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize. I didn't know Alderman Marx had the conversation with you that he was o- I'd, okay with.
That's okay, that's fine.
I was just thinking on behalf, but, uh, had I known that, I would have never even brought it up, so I apologize for that. But, uh, I think you're right. I think we, unfortunately, time is, is, is not on our side, so we're going to have to do it before the August fifteenth deadline. But I think when we leave here, if you guys agree to what you're going to deliver back, we agree that we're going to make a final decision on that, and, and we're done.
Well, before any of these, before any agreements are made here, we have a motion on the floor that we have to consider. Apparently, uh, there's some, uh, additional is...
Can I just speak on timing, so we have clarity? Um, August thirteenth is actually a Saturday, so your meeting before that would be August eighth. So, the, um, if you're going to try to take action at the committee of the whole on the twenty-fifth, you cannot get your answer on the twenty-fifth. If there's modifications that have to be made to the agreement, that would have to go to the city's council in addition. Um, we worked to get packets ready the week prior. Um, and if there's modifications to the agreement, um, you know, we would ask that the school district, you know, meet sooner than later and get those to the city, so the city can react, make modifications, and be in a position, if the twenty-fifth is the date that you're looking to vote, um, I mean, I, I would request that they meet the week of the fifth, the fourth.
Well, my statement is, we're going to vote on the twenty-fifth, period. What they do is in their hands. It's up to them. If they fumble, they fumble. If they come back late and we don't have time to react, that's as bad as anything else. But we have to hold ourselves accountable to taking action before the clock just runs out on us. That's not an option, which is my point. Then, if, if I may, one, one last comment on, on something Alderman Simoni was saying. There, there is no vision. My, my point about, about the viable businesses is just that by removing what would effectively be forty-nine percent of the properties in the TIF, we constrain any possible vision that might occur in that area. And a viable business is not put out of business by a vision per se. Um, they may be accommodated, they may be relocated, they may be relocated in brand spank, a new building. It all depends on what the vision is, but the, the ability to see something impactful is based in part on the size of the district. And as we've learned, it's not just a district of individual properties for that reason. It's a, it's an area. Um, so, don't, nobody should be thinking that I thought there was an idea or not. I was trying to get across the point that, that we shouldn't constrain whatever visions might come. That's all.
Mr. Bruno.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the timeline, Kathleen. Um, a couple of things. I, I, I think we're putting ourselves under too great a time crunch, and, and I would be very uncomfortable doing, you know, having a cow vote and a council vote same night. Um, so, correct me if I'm wrong. If the school board can have something by our meeting of the eighteenth, that's, that would be, count, that'd be, uh, so we'd have special cow, and then we could have that vote. Uh, special city council, um, July twenty-fifth, that would fit our timeline.
I won't be here on the twenty-fifth, but, yes. I know.
Who allows that?
[laughing]
Um, you know, I, I, it seems like there's been lots of time to have formal proposals. Um, you know, I don't know what the machinations are within the, the school board, so I, I won't criticize that. I just feel like we haven't gotten fully fleshed out, uh, proposals. Um, you know, I'm, I'm all for giving that additional chance for those proposals, um, but I, 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 I'm getting uncomfortable with our, our deadline, and, and I would not want to make both votes on the same night. So, I don't know how we accomplish that. Thank you.
Alderman Radecki. Your mic, please.
Yeah, I have it. Um, in, in an attempt to maybe, um, clarify, simplify, and I'll try to state this as simply as possible, because there's, this is all about math, okay? And it's all about money. It's really not about properties. It's really not about whether or not you guys think this stuff fits into a, a TIF district. I mean, there's a reason why we do this as a district and not building by building and the fifty-five percent number. I mean, this is all a lot of fun to talk about, but in the end, this is about money, okay? Um, what we had proposed was twenty-nine percent of the district, basically, which you guys have rejected and said, hey, can we get back to you? Um, I understand the mayor's frustration, and I share a big part about it, uh, big part of that with you. Um, my position will be that sooner rather than later, we will need to hear back from you. Um, my guess is that you will just use properties to get to a certain dollar amount, and that's fine with me, because it is all about dollars. It's not about the properties that are involved with us. It comes down to the dollars. So, um, with that said, I think the city's original offer of these two properties, the surplus, taking twenty-nine percent out, was a very strong, very good offer. I think the forty-nine percent is a very unreasonable reply to that offer. So, uh, you know, the final decision will... So, uh, you know, the final decision will rest here. I think I owe it to you to let you know how I feel about it, so that when you do come back, I will simply look at the dollars, see how they shake out, and somewhere in between here and there, if we can come to an agreement, that's great, but it's gonna have to come quickly rather than, than later. And if any more of these dates are dropped, for whatever reason, we're gonna have to just proceed with what we have. So, um, sooner better than later. I, I do take the, the Mark Rosso's letter, um, actually as a, as an olive branch to continue negotiations. I actually do think, because he didn't wait till the 22nd, he gave it to us on the 20th, I appreciate that. I get a lot of letters at 7:03 on the date that you ask for something to be replied to. So, um, I'm willing to, to go, uh, and give you the additional time, but I think it's just fair that you know my position, that this will come down to dollars. I am not interested in, in jeopardizing the entire TIF by offering half of it back to you. So we'll wait to hear what you guys have to say. I think that there's been a lot of interesting discussions around this, and, uh, there's a lot of good, a lot's been gained by it, but, uh, in the end, it is time that we do have to move forward with it. So, anyway, if that's an incorrect summation of where we're at in a simplistic view, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's how I'm looking at it right now. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg.
Uh, am I correct in understanding that we're gonna meet on the 13th as well? And couldn't we have a, couldn't we have a, a special cow meeting that evening?
We have not received responses from all the Alderman. It appears that July 13th is a Wednesday night meeting scheduled, July 29th.
I thought that we agreed to that.
Uh, again, we have not heard from all the council members, but it appears that July 13th.
Well, how long's that been out there?
It's been out there for a while, so now that we've passed the deadline of postponing the meeting, it has to be July 13th, so.
So we are gonna meet on the 13th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we're there to discuss two other subjects.
Well, I'm just saying that this one, at least we'd have an opportunity to see what their response is at that point. I'm thinking.
If, if it's the, if it's the committee's desire to discuss their response in public and strategize over our response in public, that's up to the committee.
Well.
Yeah, but yes, we are meeting July 13th.
Okay.
All right. There is a motion on the floor that we have to vote on. Yes, Alderman Burkhardt.
I'm sorry. Kathleen, for those wa, watching, uh, watching at home, can you, um, define the surplus, this idea of surplus property and how that would work in this agreement?
Sure. The logic behind it was pretty much explained already, that, um, the school district, um, has requested that we take a look at some of the properties that were developed under TIF I. And, um, so those properties, the ones that were highlighted was Geneva Place and Geneva on the Dam. And those would be declared each year as surplus properties. And the increment for that money, instead of going into the special TIF allocation fund to be used within the district, would be distributed to all of the taxing districts that have the ability to levy taxes within the city of Geneva. So that would be the school district, the park district, the library district, the county. And so each year, uh, the city would look at what that increment was and return it.
But if those properties were to undergo any kind of redevelopment, that would, uh, kinda set a new standard in place, and the money would go back, the increment would then go back into the TIF, right?
Right, the idea was if, um, significant redevelopment occurred there, that would require approval of a redevelopment agreement by the city council, then that money would be, um, allowed to go into the special allocation fund. The thinking being that we would need that increment to reinvest into that property.
So if a strip like the buttermilk building were to be declared surplus, as, as long as it's functioning and the business is there, it's, it seems like it's a very functioning strip, it could be surplus. But if some grand vision came across economic development to the city that we, because that's our, our, uh, one of our responsibilities, uh, then that could take, be taken out of the surplus role and the money from that buttermilk strip would go back into the TIF? Is that correct?
The premise would be the same for whatever property you determined should be included into surplus properties.
So what I'm saying is declaring something surplus doesn't mean that it can't be redeveloped as part of the TIF. It would, what it would do is it's taking money away from the TIF.
It's taking money from the special allocation fund, so it's taking money away from being reinvested into the TIF program and into the district for the redevelopment.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Maladra.
So I'm not, I, I need some help figuring out the best way to accomplish what I want to accomplish, which is to continue this, or?
The, the motion, Mr. Chairman, would be to a motion to postpone decision on this item, and you could include items G through K to a date certain, that date certain would be, I think, what the committee's agreed, July 25?
Uh, 18th?
Or, excuse me, 18th?
Or July 13th?
July 13th is not a, is not a.
The 11th and the 18th?
Yeah, July 13th is not a committee of the whole meeting, it's a, it's a, it's a special policy discussion meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go to.
We, we could, if you'd like, but that's up to you guys, so.
The 11th and the 18th could be possibilities to build in a little, a little cushion, just a suggestion.
Up to the committee.
I would certainly think that we have, with the motion on the floor.
Alderman Simoni has.
Well, yes, Alderman.
I guess I have a question to the school district, when do you all think the earliest you can get back to us is?
I can only tell you that sitting there, the, the, the 25th was not going to be a problem. But when you start talking about the 13th and, and earlier, then, then the question became, I hope that's not gonna be a problem, so. That's all I can say, but that, again, this is your, your decision, not, not the school district's.
I move to postpone action on items G through.
H.
K.
K.
H, H through K, excuse me.
H through K.
H through K, uh, until July 18th.
25th.
18th.
18th.
Oh, second.
Well, we'll, we'll have to, uh, we still have a motion on the floor that we have to execute.
I'm, I'm moving to postpone voting on that motion until the 18th. And so if that motion passes, we don't have to do this.
You're right. Okay. All right. Question on the motion, uh, Mr. Alderman Rodecky.
Okay, I won't be here on the 18th, but I know that that's neither here nor there. And we're gonna run into the same problem, we're gonna continue. I have a question, when will you guys meet and when will you have an answer back for us?
I can't tell you when we'll meet, because.
Well, can, can some?
Call all board members, we have to find out their availability, so I can't, you know. We're gonna try and do this just as quickly as possible, so that we wanna make sure that, that, that we're not holding anyone up. And we're not creating any further issues with time.
I'm trying to make this independent of them, they're gonna do whatever they're gonna do. But we have to hold ourselves accountable.
Well, I'm just asking, I mean, just to, you know, we're trying to get people together here, I'm just trying to ask a simple question, and I guess it's not a, it's not a simple answer, huh? Can't give me one.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get dates together the same way you do. We're gonna send out the blast.
You see how efficient it is here, the way we do it, so, yeah. Okay. Well, you, you know our dates, so I guess I'll, we'll leave it in your hands then, okay?
Thank you. It's good faith, good faith negotiations, and we're gonna continue that.
Well, there, there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded.
Yes.
Green, would you please read the motion?
Motion is to postpone items for H through K to July 18th.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion carried. So the remaining issues are no longer need to be discussed.
New business.
So, is there any new business to be brought forth to council this evening? Anyone from the audience have any new business? Yes, Alderman Burkhardt.
I just wanted to say what a success I thought Swedish Days was, I was there every day but one. And, um, uh, I just, people, I could not believe the amount of people downtown, all having a great time, and, uh, the chamber did good work. And, uh, of course, our police officers and city staff to support them. I saw Chief Passrelli out there working traffic when we walked the parade on Sunday, so, um, just another wonderful Swedish days, so.
I agree, it was an exciting week in the city of Geneva. I'm looking for a motion to, uh, move, move, close. Yes, uh, and seconded by?
I moved.
Oh, me, seconded by me.
Okay, very good. All those in favor signify for saying aye.
Aye.